I'd like to call this August 6th, 2020 Regular Board of Education Meeting to Order. Mr. Onagastu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Sully?
Here.
Mr. Mikko?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mrs. Hauser?
Here.
All present, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on our agenda is our district goals. Our goals remain the same: student growth and achievement, financial prudence, and community engagement. And I will say, all three of those have been tested and challenged in the past two weeks, but we will continue to use those as our guideposts and we will work through our challenges. Next is public comment. I don't see any. There is no public comment. Next on our agenda is Treasurer's Report. Mr. Onagastu?
Thank you, Mr. Mikko. I have one item for your consideration tonight. It is for an invoice -- it is for an invoice order approval. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer that in accordance with ORC for after-the-fact invoices, the Board approves the following invoice repayment and the Treasurer authorized to sign the fiscal certificate. The vendors for Kalenich Fence for Materials for the tennis courts, the amount of $19,739, and it was -- the work was done on May 27th, and the invoice data is $727. And the reason it's an after-the-fact, it was included in the budget and the project costs. We were under the impression Vasco was gonna pay Kalenich -- or Mr. Kalenich directly, and they sent us the invoice and we said we would take care of it.
So to be clear, it was already budgeted. It's not additional money. It's just a matter of how we account for it?
Correct. It was just logistics. We believed that Vasco was gonna pay for the installation and the amounts were the same. It just was sent to us.
Any other questions for George? Dr. Reiba, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mikko. We have a couple of discussion items on the agenda for today. The first is talking about our restart plans for the upcoming school year. Obviously, that's been a very popular topic at all of our Board meetings this summer, but wanted to give you an update and finalize my recommendation to the Board as to how we'll start the 2020-21 school year. So all of the Board members, you have the slides in front of you if you'd like to look along with us, as well as the slides will be presented here. But as you all know, you've seen this slide over and over and this graphic over and over. This is what we've been working on for the last three and a half months. We need to have a plan in all aspects of what our learning framework needs to be based on the different COVID risk levels, and that goes from in-person, in-building learning, to blended learning, to remote learning. And we've also talked about at length Solo, our Strongsville online learning opportunity for families and students that do not want to participate in any sort of in-person or remote learning, that they would be completely virtual for at least a semester. So that was the focus of the work. We spent a lot of time last meeting talking about how we -- our reentry plan for the school year. And then, right around that same time, the Cuyahoga County Board of Health shared a very specific recommendation for our county, and there were two aspects of that recommendation. The first one said is that they recommend that all schools start the 2020-21 school year opening remotely due to the elevated health risk, and they also recommended that we discontinue extracurriculars such as sports, band, choir, theater, other activities during the remote learning period. So obviously, when our local health authority comes out with a recommendation such as that, we need to take that seriously. We need to reflect and take a look at that, and that's what we've done. And I think it's important to note that, you know, we have a lot of high-quality educators in our district, no matter what their role is, whether it's support, classroom, administration. But our role and our expertise and our degrees is in how do we best educate children. It's not on contagious viruses, contagious diseases, and pandemics. So we need to rely on our local and state health professionals to provide guidance. The Board of Health did that. And in addition to looking at the Board of Health guidance, you know, this last week has been busy continuing conversations with a variety of other groups. So it wasn't just the Board of Health sent out a recommendation and we read it and were interpreting it. They sent out that recommendation on Thursday night, or Thursday they said, Friday they put it through. I believe that was the 31st. But on Friday afternoon, along with a lot of Cuyahoga County superintendents, we were actually on a Zoom call with the folks that made the decision. So we were able to spend a significant amount of time with them, asking questions. And one of the things that I think was important, and we'll talk about the reasoning for their recommendations here as we go throughout, but a specific question was asked is, "Do you feel that your recommendation is gonna change in the next five weeks?" And their answer was clearly no, that they do not see any change of their recommendation because what they're -- they have a series of metrics, just like our color-coded system at the state level, but what they're sharing is the heart and foundation of the recommendation is a few things. First of all, it's the positivity rate in tests went from around 3% to 9%. So more people in Cuyahoga County are testing positive with COVID than before. Now, that positivity rate has declined recently in the last few weeks, but it's still too high. What they've also said is that there is a concern with the amount of spread that they're seeing in the county, specifically from asymptomatic individuals. And the third thing that they shared, which was new information to me, is that they do not have the capability, should schools open, to test children. And that is of concern to them. So what they said is, "We would deal and give feedback based on symptoms versus positive or negative COVID tests." So putting that all into a concise statement, we feel that there's a lot of risk in the county based on the prevalence of COVID cases, the spread of COVID cases, the positivity rate, and the lack of testing for children. And we feel if we open up schools and put mass amounts of students and adults inside for extended period of time, that it's going to exacerbate that situation. So that's the foundation of the request. So we were able to spend some time talking with them, had discussions with superintendents, not only in the county, but our neighboring superintendents. I was on calls today with all of our neighbors, plus all of our neighbors on the west side of Cleveland, all the way up to Lake Erie, to get some context and discussion with them. And then, obviously, my role is to ensure the health and safety and educational benefits of our entire organization. And I've spent more time than I wish to omit thinking, reflecting, researching, reading, talking with people so that we can make the best decision, and I can make the best recommendation possible moving forward. The other thing that we have to take into consideration is, what are potential liabilities and risks to our students, our staff, and our district? So we've reached out and we've contacted our lawyers to say, "Hey, if we go against this recommendation, what would the liabilities be?" We reached out to our insurance companies and said, you know, "If somebody tests positive," and hopefully this would never happen, but, you know, gets COVID, and that COVID has long-term effects and possibly death, what is the liability for the district? And so taking all of those things into consideration and all those conversations and discussions with our local health professionals, that's led me to the recommendation that we start the 2020-21 school year in Remote Learning 2.0. This is the recommendation of the Board of Health. I feel strongly that this is the way we should open up the school year, and it's on the slide. But, you know, the next question is, well, how long? What's gonna be the duration of this? And so although we're not saying definitively, we are saying that parents need to prepare for a quarter. As you take a look at the information that's been shared, it feels -- it appears that a quarter may be an appropriate amount of time that we need to prepare for students to be home in remote learning for the first quarter, which the dates are there from August 24th pending the Board vote on the first day of school, as through October 16th. But if conditions improve, we are gonna open up sooner. And so what we're sharing with you is, we are gonna start the year remote 2.0, plan for a quarter, but if conditions change, that will allow us to come in person, that would allow us to go in blended learning prior to that end of the first quarter, we would do that. We would give parents a minimum of one-week notice so that they were aware of when we would reopen the buildings and start in blended or in-person. And then, if you remember from our previous conversations, we did have a phase-in period. It was a two-week phase-in period of students going every other day. Whether that's still gonna be two weeks or not, I think we've got to get into the school year and see. I believe at least we need a week because we're talking about procedural changes, lunch, transportation, movement in the buildings. So there still would be a specific phase-in period. How long that would be is to be determined. So, you know, where we go to next is, well, what conditions would cause improvement that would change the decision of the district or the decision of the Board of Health? So as we all know, things change daily. So a few hours ago today, the Cuyahoga County Board of Health released an FAQ for schools and also a letter to schools giving additional detail as to their recommendations. So they specifically put some items on their list of what conditions they would consider to rescind their recommendation and say, "Schools, you can open back up," and they would recommend opening back up. The first thing this list is there is that they would wanna see a decline in cases over a one-month period. So again, if you wanna take a look at this, go to Cuyahoga County Board of Health. You could look at their website, and you could see that for Cuyahoga County, over the last two weeks, we've seen a decline in cases. So if you look at a one-month period, we're halfway there in terms of this metric that they would look at. They're also looking at a positivity rate below 5%. Again, this is taking how many people were tested, how many test positive. You know, this metric comes from hospitals, and so the last metric that -- or the last measurement I saw was from last week, and like I said, it was at 6.5%. So there may be more updated rates, but that's the level that I saw. So we're -- we went from nine to seven and a half to six and a half. So we're trending in the right direction in terms of positivity rate. Sustained improvement in the COVID risk level. So what they're saying here is, it's not just we become orange, because if you look at the graphs that went out today, the updates on the graphs, the only reason Cuyahoga -- and correct me if I'm wrong, if I misinterpreted the data, but the only reason that we are still red is because of the prevalence of the CDC rating of, we have more than 100 cases per capita. So if you look at the metric, you know, zero-to-one cases is yellow, two-to-three is orange, two-to-three markers, not cases, I apologize, two-to-three markers on their metric is orange. Right now, Cuyahoga County, as of today, hit two of those markers, but it says in the guidance that if you have that high prevalence rate based on the CDC, you have over 100 people per capita. We have 114 right now. So we're gonna stay in that red level until that is eliminated. And the last one is, and we have another call with them tomorrow, so hopefully we can get additional clarity, but the other one is increased testing capacity for children. So I have no additional information or clarity or specifics as to, does that look promising? You know, what does that look like in this county? But that are -- those are some of the conditions that we would take a look at, or that they would take a look at to see if they would rescind the order or the recommendation. And then, obviously, as a school district, these are recommendations, right? So we have the ability to make our own decisions as a school district based on the data that's available. So before I move on to the next few kind of procedural update slides, I just wanted to pause to see if there were any questions from the Board. Okay? So moving on, I wanted to go through some kind of procedural items about what does this mean for staff, what does this mean for students, and obviously, as I've shared, we have a community conversation next week. We will spend a lot of time answering additional questions, providing any additional updates at that time. But on August 17th, we have staff that works throughout the summer. They're here working. They will continue to be here working. But our staff, whose calendar is based on the school year, they will report to work on August 17th. We talked to the Board of Health to say, "Okay, you've given this recommendation that schools should not be open. What about bringing in staff?" And their comment to that was, their recommendation does not include staff, that because of students not being in the building, as long as we follow, you know, the social distancing, wearing masks, good hygiene, washing hands, that we can bring staff back to work. But I do wanna say, as we take and update the Board, as we take a look at staffing, and as we start to see that additional school districts are following the same pattern of starting the school year in remote 2.0, that it is our -- it is my expectation that staff will -- all staff will report to work during this time period. But I also have to be clear that we do have staff members that may qualify for certain rights that they have, whether it be through FF-CRA, the CARES Act, the Family First CARES Act, FMLA, the Family Medical and Leave Act, or the American with Disabilities Act. So the process that we would have used if we were in person is still the process that we're going to use with this to see if staff qualify, that even without students, that they're not able to come to work. The other layer that we have to put in there is depending on staff ability to come to work, then we would make the decision as to whether we would make that staff member take the appropriate leave, or whether we would, if they're able to, work remotely from home. Because one of the things that we have to consider is, I still need teachers to facilitate remote learning 2.0, and we'll talk about what that looks like. And if there's a significant number of staff that would qualify that can't come to work, not only would that be a financial cost to the district of hiring substitutes on top of paying for appropriate leave for staff, but it would be difficult at this point of the year to find qualified staff to be able to facilitate that. So we are gonna go through that process with our staff, but our expectation is that staff will report to work and be able to facilitate their job or an alternative job or remote learning 2.0 in district. So what does this look like for students? Students, again, pending the Board's vote on the adjusted calendar, will still start August 24th. That week of August 17th that we talked about training and professional development, that's still needed. We still need the time and resources and Erin and her department and collaborating with others. You know, we've had teachers in district every day since August 3rd taking part in training, and that training is gonna continue. But what I wanted to do is give an update as to what this looks like for students at each level. And so as Rich has continued to say, you know, think of remote 1.0, and this is better. And so the feedback that we heard loud and clear from our families is that we want live instruction, we want access to our teachers, and we want it to be some resemblance of what a typical school day would be like, in understanding that it's not good for anybody to sit at a computer for seven and a half hours a day, right? So we're working through all of that. So remote learning 2.0, again, students are at home predominantly, and I'll talk about predominantly here in the next slide. But it's a combination of synchronous and asynchronous learning. We have flipped from asynchronous being the predominant mode of remote learning to synchronous. Synchronous means live, asynchronous means recorded or other independent work by students, but we are still going to record lessons. It's important for us that we understand everybody's families are different. Some may be able to log on, and that's what we want, and we'll talk about some procedures associated with that. But we also understand that there may be some family commitments that preclude a student from logging on at a certain time. So I'm gonna exit the presentation here and just kind of go through. Let's start with preschool. So preschool, we have three types of programs. We have a half-day program, an AM/PM -- or two types really, just an AM/PM program, and then we have a five-hour program. The five-hour program is a program that does not include typical peers. It's students with specific disabilities that are best served in a classroom that meets their needs with ABA services. And so that schedule is still being finalized. But if you take a look at this, what this would mean for preschool is that as a preschool student, if I'm in the morning session, I would log on to a device, and we would have basically a morning meeting. We'd spend 15 minutes with the teacher. We'd do a morning meeting, and that would be live. And then, we would go into, as you can see in those timeframes, we'd have an ELA block and a math block. Each of those would be 20 minutes. Now, what those little dots mean, the little coding here, is that the synchronous lesson, at least 20 minutes, could be of each bank, but it could be small group instruction at least two days. So when we take a look at the schedule, what that's saying is that there's gonna be live instruction. It may be within that 20 minutes that it's a combination of, hey, everybody's gonna be here for live instruction, and then we're gonna hang out in small groups. Not appropriate for this age level, but Google Meet, which is our predominant platform for virtual meetings, is now coming out with breakout groups, so we can kind of break out to do small group work. And then they'd have encore, which is art, music, and physical education. And then they'd have a science and social studies block, as well as some small group for one-on-one or small group work at the end of the day. One of the things that we have to be aware of is, these are three-year-old, four-year-old, and five-year-old children. And so 20 minutes meets what would have occurred as very similar to a traditional classroom, but based on actually implementing this in practice, we may need to adjust those times accordingly. So the same approach is for the afternoon, just different times. I'm gonna keep going unless there's questions. So the middle school -- I'm sorry, the elementary school is very similar. Half-day kindergarten will get instruction equivalent to what a half-day kindergarten day would be, but as you see, that there would be, again, start the morning with 30-minute live synchronous check-in, morning meeting, IIP are, you know, the skills we want our students to develop, as we've talked about, whether it be collaborative or global. There's a variety of other ones that we work on that would be a part of that. And then, as you can see, there's three instructional blocks that are 60 minutes long. And those three instructional blocks is, one would be math, one would be ELA, and one would be science and social studies and a content literacy block. What that means is, when possible, we use literature to help facilitate science and social studies curriculum. Students would still get an encore period each day, i.e. intervention enrichment. So that's a period where students, it may not be all students, but students as directed by the teacher could log in and get intervention and enrichment supports. And then, at the end of the day, it would just be a review block, a check-in to make sure everybody's doing okay. So I believe if memory serves, if you add this up, elementary would start at 9:00 a.m., just like they normally do, and they would be done at 2:45. And so, I'm sorry, they'd be done a little bit later than that. I apologize because lunch isn't there. They'll have a break for lunch. But as you take a look at this again, you know, some families may say, "This is awesome. My kid's gonna have instruction, you know, throughout the entire school day." And some families may say, "Wow, that's a long time to be online." But in practice, like we've talked about, synchronous will be at least 30 minutes of each block. So if you take a look at those 60-minute blocks, we're saying at least half of that will be live instruction with the teacher. And then there'll be some small group instruction in those other times in the daily intervention and enrichment check. So again, that repeats itself for the other grade levels. As you can see, the things that change are the blocks of instructional, just like any schedule. Encore teachers need to have that spread out throughout the day, i.e. is spread out throughout the day. So three blocks of core instruction, a review block, a morning meeting block, encore, and then there'll be a lunchtime and a break time for the kids in there.
Dr. Roberts, in the block scheduling here, do you imagine kids logging on and off essentially throughout the day, or is it something they would log in, have their 30 minutes of instruction, and then kind of 30 minutes of their work, and then go to the next one, or is it kind of the kids logging, or the students logging on and off?
I think it would depend in that. So based on the idea that, you know, it would be really 30 minutes of live instruction and then some work time for students. In practice, it will most likely be, I'm gonna click on and join the Google Meet, be there for the 30 minutes. If I have questions or wanna work with the teacher a little bit more, I'll stand a little bit longer, but then I'll be able to log off, do some work, get a little break from the computer. Am I stating that accurately, Erin?
Yeah.
Okay. So that would be the general idea, that, you know, you kind of have that link for the Google Meet there, and you log on and off of the Google Meet throughout the day. And also, it would be depending, you know, in upper grade levels, you know, if the teams decide that, hey, we're still gonna do the traditional, teacher X is gonna do math, teacher Y is gonna do ELA, they would still have that opportunity to log on and off between those different teachers.
Thank you.
So middle school and high school are very similar, just different periods of the day. So really, when you take a look at the middle school and high school schedule, and we're looking at the middle school right now, is that you either run the period all day, you run a traditional schedule, right, one through period one through period eight, and to adjust for the amount of time students would be online, you can shorten those class periods. You know, a lot of people will, instead of 45, 48 minutes, it'll be 30 minutes or 20 minutes. Or you can have an alternating schedule, and that's what both our middle school and high school have selected as their remote learning experience. So what that means is, you could see here, this is a middle school student's schedule. So from that 7:50 to 8:55, it's gonna be opportunity for teachers to have office hours, for teachers to meet, for professional development to be provided. And then, at 9 o'clock, they are gonna start their school day, and their school day will go through, you know, 2:50. So what we've done is, we've taken at the middle school their eight periods of the day and divided them into two days. So instead of going to class every day for a half hour, they're going to go to class every other day for an hour. So as you can see, I'm gonna go to first period for an hour, then third period, then fifth period, and then seventh period. And then, on the opposite day, that's what they would do for second, fourth, sixth, and eighth. Now, as the Board knows and some of our families know, we have, at some grade levels, we have block courses at the middle school, which means, instead of getting one period of math, you get two periods of math, or two periods of English Language Arts. The reason they selected evens or odd periods on one day and even periods on the other is because we didn't wanna have students in two hours of math on the same day. So, you know, those are paired up together. So if I have first period math, the second half of it is second period. So they've, you know, broken those up, so students would still get the two periods of ELA or math, depending on their grade level, but it would be separated by two days. And so those are, that would be the schedule for the middle school students. And the same idea for the high school, they just pick different periods. So 7:20 to 8:50 is going to be teacher meetings, PD, office hours, and then first, second, fifth, and sixth period, and then a support period at the end of the day, and then the remaining periods on the second day, that would be the schedule. Now, I do wanna talk about something that when we start remote learning 2.0, it will run, I'm talking about elementary, middle school, and high school, the schedules that I shared will be facilitated Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. At the start of the school year, Friday will not follow that schedule. And the reason being is, we are concerned about our students being able to keep pace and sustain remote learning as we get this up and going. Because if you think, you know, I'm used to being in my teacher's classroom. He or she will teach me. We'll have time to work together. We'll have time to problem solve. We'll have time to learn. This is all, we're gonna have challenges because it's virtual and it's remote. And even though they're gonna have a lot of access to their teachers, you can't reproduce in-person instruction in a remote setting. So based on conversations with our principals, and I support that recommendation, that it's in the best interest of our students that we start off four days a week. On the fifth day a week, teachers will, teachers are there to intervene, are there to support. There'll be office hours throughout the day. There'll also be meeting times, like for example, at the elementary level, we have five different buildings. Our first-grade teachers can't get together just during one of the normal days. So this gives the opportunity for meetings led by our administrators as first-grade teachers to talk about, problem solve, how do things go, what do we need to improve on, Erin and our various departments to have professional development. And so that would be how we start the year. Our goal is to add that Friday as soon as we feel students are able to sustain, and they've learned, and they've grown, and they're able to manage remote learning 2.0 at home, we would add that Friday. And so we would communicate when that would be. But it's still five academic days, four live instruction, one day of support, intervention, remediation, small group help as needed, and then we would move forward in adding that fifth day as soon as possible.
Dr. Roberts, will our college credit plus classes that are offered at the high school, will they follow that same schedule?
So as of right now, nobody's told me that any class would be offered any differently. So if they are taking college credit plus in our building, and I will clarify, Laura, but I believe they will follow that same schedule. If they are taking college credit plus off-campus, most of -- they can, most of credit plus off-campus, most of, they can, most of our students go to Tri-C, they would follow whatever Tri-C's schedule is, what, however they're moving about that. The other thing that's important to note, too, is Polaris has declared that they're going to be in person. So it's important that all of our Polaris parents know that students are required to follow the requi- they're required to follow the rules of wherever they're going to school. So if I go to Polaris and it's in person, I have to go to Polaris in person. Just because we're remote doesn't mean that you don't go to Polaris. Same thing with our students taking college credit plus. They would be required to follow Tri-C or the, the LCC or whatever institution's rules. Okay, so the other thing we talked about, you know, students are going to be at home five days a week, participating in remote learning. Obviously, as, as you can see, a lot more live instruction that's being provided, interaction with students, engagement. But we also wanted to share, again, per the Board of Health guidelines, we can bring small groups of students into school. There is a statewide ban on mass gatherings, and so we are able to bring in groups of no larger than nine, the teacher or the adult has to be counted in that. So we are still looking at these possibilities, but I just wanted to give the families an update, that although we're in Remote Learning 2.0, there's some circumstances where it's going to be in the best interest of our students and our educational process to bring in individual students or small groups. So I just wanted to give some highlights. The first one is, we've got a lot of materials. Now, we've got to think back, when we went through this in March, our students knew their teachers, they had their Chromebooks, they had all of the materials, they knew the process and the procedures. In August, that's not going to be true anymore. So we have to look at, how are we going to, first of all, have our students, and this doesn't just mean our younger students, but how do we get all students to, to meet their teacher? You know, start to build whatever relationship we can be, even if it's a quick meeting, to start to, to talk and see him or her. And also, how do we get all the materials? You know, in, in the elementary level, there's a handful of workbooks, you know, textbooks at the, at, at the secondary level, novels that they may need to read. So we're going to have to, the principals know, and, and we've talked yesterday, that they're going to have to work with staff to, to build in a rotation, to get students to not only meet teachers, but to pick up materials. One of the things, we, we've talked a lot throughout these past few months about managerial tasks. How are we going to move kids in and out? How are we going to walk in the hallway? And the one thing we, we've been working hard on and diligently on internally, but haven't talked a lot publicly, is how are we going to help support our students in the learning gaps that are going to exist, not only from the three months of remote learning, the, the summer months, as we come back. And so, you know, we have a variety of diagnostic tools that we use, and some of those diagnostic tools need to be administered individually or in small groups, and we can't do it remotely. And so one of the things we've got to take a look at is, how are we going to gather baseline data on students to address learning gaps, have a plan to meet their educational needs? We're going to need some students to come in to, to do some of that work. One of the, one of the big concerns I have is for our youngest learners that are not, not only do not have the basic foundational skills to apply in their learning, but we're asking them to learn through a computer and through a device. And so there's going to be, need to be some training for, for our students, not just our younger students, but all students, in terms of remote learning. We talked about materials that would be inclusive of Chromebook distribution. The next one that's on the list, and, and I know Andy Trejo has been working with a couple workgroups, and, and as we've talked about here, he talked about online last meeting, the federal government and the laws that govern special education services have not been changed, they've not been lessened. And, and Andy's developed with his team a remote learning plan, where every family who has a child with an IEP would meet, and they determine what services and what goals and how we would meet them. But there's certain things that just do not transfer into a telehealth or, 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 or teleapproach. And so what we're looking at is, is having the ability of students to come in to receive their therapy services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech-language pathology, et cetera, that are best facilitated in person. So that's something that we would take a look at. And we would also take a look at, you know, making sure we're supporting the social, emotional, and mental health needs of our students. We offer counseling services throughout the district, whether it be through our school counselors, whether it be through Nancy Lowry and Associates, so that's more of a clinical counseling approach, as well as the social workers that we have hired out of our student wellness funds and other grant funds, that we want to allow that, those services to continue. And so we would be looking at opportunities for students to come in, in small groups or individual for those services as well. So again, not an exhaustive list, but want to share with families that it doesn't mean, there's no order that says, like there was in March to May, that schools must be closed for students. There's recommendations, and there's allowances for smaller groups of students, so we can help support them. So at this time, I want to transition to how, how does this recommendation pair with the SOLO program? And so as we know, you know, we, we had a survey that went out to families, it closed on July thirty-first, they said whether they were interested to enroll in, in delivery option one, two, or three. And as a reminder, delivery option one is purchase curriculum with contracted staff. Delivery option two is the same purchase curriculum, but with Strongsville City School staff. And delivery option three is Strongsville City School staff with Strongsville City Schools curriculum. So tomorrow, Aaron is going to be sending an email to every parent that expressed any interest in the SOLO program. And it's going to share that we need you to commit, that you want your students to be enrolled in delivery option one. So I want to make sure that I'm being clear. At this point, we will be offering delivery option one, which is purchase curriculum, contracted staff. If Strongsville teachers are available, once we get through this process of, you know, this has been a complete game changer, right, for us? So there were, we, we know the staff that couldn't come in if we were in person. We now have to say, now that it's remote, can you come in still or not? So I, I don't have, we don't have the data yet to say, what is the pool of Strongsville teachers that can't come in that we can utilize in option two. So students may be enrolled in option two, but the one consistency is you have to consider, you're not going to get option three, which is Strongsville curriculum. Parents, as, as we said, you will confirm enrollment in SOLO. If you don't want to enroll in SOLO and you want to go to Remote Learning 2.0, that's fine. You just rescind, or, you know, Aaron will be clear in her, her directions as to the procedures. And it's also important, because we get this question a lot from elementary parents, parent, elementary families that signed up for SOLO, we never took you off the class list, or we never took you off the list at your homeschool. So you don't have to worry, if you have a spot in your homeschool, you are still there. Nobody is aware of who their teachers are yet that gets posted later on, but all of that information is, is still there. Also, parents that maybe didn't complete the original SOLO survey, we will allow them a very short window of time to enroll in the SOLO program. So we'll give, we'll send that out tomorrow, they'll have until the end of the day Monday to enroll. And then that will be, I, I want to be clear, you know, we give deadlines, and we always want to help folks out, but we've got to move forward. And this impacts class list, it impacts staffing. So the end of the day, Monday, August tenth, that is a firm deadline, we are not going to make allowances for that unless somebody enrolls in our district after that date. And then the other part that is there is, if you decide, I want to, I don't want to be in SOLO anymore, I want to go to Remote 2.0, if the district announces that we will be going back to in-person or blended learning, we will give you an option to enroll in SOLO, even if that's at the end of the quarter, at the end of the month, whenever that is. The way the programs work, we're able to, it's easy, easier for us to put you into SOLO partway through the year than it is for you to leave SOLO and, and come back in to school. And so that's why people that enroll, they're going to be there for the semester. I, I did want to make one point of clarification about SOLO option three. There is no way that we will be able to offer SOLO option three based on starting in remote. So parents need to understand, option one is the starting point, if we have staff, we will definitely utilize our staff, and that would be option two. The reason we are not able to offer, or we will not consider in the future, offering delivery option three, first of all, it's because of availability of staff, right? It was all predicated on availability of staff. And then secondly, I am predicting that a lot of people that enrolled in SOLO will come back to Remote 2.0. We will then not have the ability to say, because of the number of third graders that enrolled in SOLO, I need one less third-grade teacher. Once we start the school year and all of those teachers are there, they are there. And we're not going to consolidate classes, we are not going to move teachers to bring them to the SOLO program, they are going to stay. So that option, where we could have captured six or seven teachers, is no longer there. And that's why we've eliminated option three based on our start of Remote 2.0. Aaron, anything I missed that you'd like to add?
No, just that option three is essentially Remote 2.0.
Yeah. So for those that couldn't hear on the microphone, what Aaron said, and it's a great point, is SOLO option three is Remote 2.0. The one guarantee that you don't have is how long will it last? And I understand that can cause some stress and anxiety, but we do not have the staffing to offer that moving forward. As we kind of talked about in terms of transportation services, and this is more just an FYI for the, the community, that, as you know, by law, we are required to provide transportation services to community and non-public schools that meet certain criteria. And the state has given clear guidance that even if Strongsville City Schools is in Remote 2.0, if, if our parochial or non-public or community schools are open, that we already provide transportation services too, we are still required to provide transportation services. So I don't know this to be the case, but let's say St. Joseph and John is open, we will provide transportation services to St. Joseph and John students, we will utilize our, our, our current requirements, which is no more than two students per seat, wearing a mask, will socially distance further if, if we're able. And for those families that have students that attend Polaris, we will still provide transportation services for Polaris. Obviously, that's going to be different. Our transportation department, we were notified about that earlier this week. And so they're working through the logistics, because remember, our kids were at school, and then we transported to and from Polaris. Now we have to work from home to and from Polaris. So we'll be working through those details.
Do we have a ability or a plan to bring students in, for example, special education, or, you know, to meet the teacher, those kind of things? Are we going to be able to use transportation for that, or is that going to be up to the parents?
We, we would be able to use that, but we haven't gotten into the details to see, is it practical based on, you know, the structure and the, the cityscape? So we're still exploring that, haven't gotten into the weeds of that as of yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So athletics and marching band. You know, we have currently, the recommendation, as you remember, is that, that athletics and marching band and theater and extracurriculars should not occur during a remote learning period. So because of that verbiage and that guidance, we are breaking up our, our decisions, or I'm breaking up my decisions, recommendations to the board into two chunks. The first one is what we initiated on Monday, and goes to the twenty-first, which, what we initiated on Monday was that's, marching band can, can start up, athletics can continue, but they would remain in phase two. To save everybody time and energy, I'm not going to the details of what is phase one, phase two, and phase three, but just know that there's specific state guidance on what phase, what restrictions are in each of those phases. And then the second part of that is, with Remote Learning starting on August twenty-fourth, what would be the decision for athletics and marching band after that? So let's take into consideration the Board of Health guidance. First of all, as we talked about, as long as we follow state guidelines, they're saying, you guys can continue it. It's recommended that those activities are discontinued during remote learning, or during remote learning. And this is one of the recommendations that just came out today. And it's recommended that if we, that schools deciding to continue with sports and extracurricular activities should suspend contact sports, given the local levels of transmission. So contact sports right now is defined by the state are football and soccer. And so those are, that is the recommendation of the Board of Health. So continuing on with athletics, just as an update to date, you know, we've been running, we had summer skills camps, we've got practices that have started. We've had no athletes or band members contract COVID based on participation in any of these programs, nor have we had any spread based on students in these, in these programs. So that's great news, and it shows that we're taking the health and safety precautions seriously and implementing those as, as required. I'm, I'm recommending to the board that during this time period, this, this August third to the twenty-first, that I continue to determine if mat- marching band or specific sports will be suspended, remain at phase two, or move to phase three of the guidelines and may be able to compete. One of the things we have to get clarity on, and this is some of the, some of the communication that has just come out from the Board of Health, on their FAQs, if you look at it, it says, you know, are we allowed to have groups of more than ten people? And they clearly say, no, you're not allowed to have more than groups of ten people. And they didn't define inside or outside, they just said you're not allowed to have groups of ten or more people. So on the call tomorrow, what we need to get clarity on is, are you, is your recommendation, or is the state mass gathering order superseding the guidelines in, in the return-to-play guidelines? So we may be forced to change into different phases, based on that mass gathering criteria, that would bring us back to phase one, but I'll know more tomorrow. And then at the August twentieth, twenty-twenty board meeting, we'll provide an update on athletics and marching band and make a decision moving forward. Now, just again, to be clear, in that second bullet point, the decisions that I would make in this time period, again, are which phase are they in, or is the activity suspended? I would not make a decision as to if the activity, athletics, or band are canceled permanently. That's something that we would have a discussion with the board at, at the August twentieth meeting. So I, I just want to be clear with our community, and I know, as I walked past marching band practice today, they said, you know, make sure you tune into the meeting to see if we're going to be here tomorrow. So the idea would be, any cancellations would be discussed publicly with the board, but suspensions would be based on my decisions.
So as of right now, band can proceed tomorrow?
As of right now, all athletics and band can proceed as they were this past week.
Thank you.
Yes. So the, the last thing that, that I wanted to share is just kind of a summation of, you know, where we've been, what we've been doing. And, you know, as a school district, you know, we've implemented our culture passport. It talks about what we believe, how we behave, and the outcomes we want as an organization. And we've spent a lot of time focused on training all of our staff in, in a program called the R Factor. And what the R factor, the, the root foundation of this is this E plus R equals O formula. And, and what that means is events plus response equals outcome. And, you know, ERO, it's the way life works. So I, I think it's very applicable to what we're all going through now. So we may go through life and have events that are small. You know, I, I wake up in the morning and I can't find where my car keys are. I got to get out of the house by nine o'clock, and my kids are not participating in the efforts to get out of the, the house. But we also have big events, which is a pandemic. And so, you know, whether events are big or small, you know, we've got to work, and the training that we provided our staff is that we can't be stuck in the events we face, but we've got to focus on the outcomes we want. And in life, as you go throughout, we, we can't control the events, we can't control the outcomes, the only thing that we can control is our response. And so I want to share with our community and our students and our staff, that the outcome I want, the outcome the board wants, the outcome we all want, is to get our students back into school for in-person learning, as long as we can do that in a manner that meets the safety and health needs of our kids, our staff, our parents, and our community. Yet, we also need to take in consideration and accept the reality of the events that we're currently facing. The event is that we have a global pandemic. And per our local health experts, you know, they're seeing heightened levels of positivity, they're seeing increased spread, they don't see the testing that's necessary. So our response, and the response that hopefully our community can feel and understand and see, is that we've put a ton of thought into this. We've put a lot of care and concern for the well-being of our kids, not just academically and athletically, but socially, emotionally, and in all aspects of their life, as well as that same level of care, thought, and consideration for our staff and our parents and our community. So if I would have made the decision to go against the Board of Health's recommendation, I strongly feel that the consequences of being wrong far outweighed the benefits of being right. And that's why our response, and my response, and my recommendation, it's cautious, it's deliberate, it's measured, and it's flexible. and my recommendation, it's cautious, it's deliberate, it's measured, and it's flexible moving forward. I truly understand that my decision is now going to create a major event for our community and for our parents and for our for our kids. I know some people at home probably have a sense of relief and a sense of peace of mind that we are going to remote 2.0. I also know that there's families that are frustrated, that they wanted their kids back to school. And not only are they frustrated, but we've caused a hardship because they have a job to do, they have work to do, and now they have students that and children that that are going to be home. And so I know we may disagree on the path that we're on right now, but we share the destination of where we're going, which is getting kids back in school so that they can get the education that they need. So all that I ask is that I want to applaud our parents and our community. The support, the care, the respect that they've shown me and the board and one another as we've gone throughout this has been tremendous. We've been able to respectfully have different viewpoints and share those different viewpoints. But if we can move forward and and in the days to come, focus on what we can control, and that's our response. So if we across the state or across our county or across our city, how do we respond? We respond by wearing masks everywhere we go. We respond by socially distancing. We respond by practicing good hygiene. We respond by not having large gatherings, maybe not having that picnic, not going out to that restaurant. Because if we all respond in this way, we can not only reach that shared outcome of having kids back in school, but we could have it sooner rather than later. And so if we're all willing to sacrifice, to have these short-term inconveniences for the long-term benefit, we can open up schools, we can open up schools sooner, and our kids continue to have a premier educational experience and thrive as members of our district. So as we continue to move forward, I know there's more questions to be answered. But I hope that if we continue to move forward in a cohesive effort as we have done, and I will continue to effectively communicate to the best of my ability to our stakeholders, that that we can get back as soon as possible as a school district and a school community. So Mr. Miko on the board, that concludes my recommendation for how we start the school year. And I'll open it up for feedback, discussion, or questions that you may have.
Well, I'll start by saying thank you, Cameron. I'll just start with my my reaction, et cetera. I have become intimate with the phrase, on the other hand. And I think for the past two or three weeks, we've all been challenged with, you know, and and people have come to us saying, what's the decision going to be? And whatever decision somebody's advocating for, you could quickly say, on the other hand. And so on the one hand, we want our students back in school. On the other hand, what about the risks to health, not just for our students, but for our staff, not just for our school district, but for the community at large? I know all of us have had those conversations with amongst ourselves, with teachers, with staff, with members of the public, with members of our community, our neighbors, et cetera, et cetera. I've had those conversations with myself. And again, ultimately, we have to make a decision and we have to have a path forward. And, you know, we've, we had a good plan in place. And then the County Board of Health came out with their recommendation, and we had to digest it, and we had to come up with a response. For myself, I don't, I don't think anybody's happy with any of the situation that we have. We all have, everyone on the board have children in the district. Everyone on the board is grappling with what's the best decision for the district as a whole, for all of the students, and what's the best decision, knowing that our own children will have to live with that decision. So it's something that we did take the time to consider. What I like about our plan is that it continues to be flexible. Speaking plainly, I think, you know, I understand the lens that the Board of Health is working through. Ultimately, either they're right or they're wrong. And our original plan that was tied to the to the weather map that Ohio came up with, I thought was reasonable. I still think it will be reasonable and it will become our guide. So if the County Board of Health is correct, we will stay in dark red, and we'll go to purple, and we'll be in remote 2.0. And if their predictions don't turn out, and all of the indicators that they they're looking at do not rise, but continue to continue to reduce, we will become orange, we'll become yellow, and we can safely go back to our goal of of in-person, which is why I'm comfortable and I'm, it's key for me that we will start in remote 2.0. And it's a an okay place to start. If we do need to be flexible, there's going to be some benefit to doing that originally and getting all of those learning phases under our belt. I'd like to challenge all of us that, you know, we have that week of teacher training, and then we're going to have that week, you know, that initial week. Whenever that happens, the technology is going to be jangly. So the sooner we start doing that testing, the sooner we give our students opportunities to make sure they can connect and 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 start that Google Meet, et cetera, the better off we are. So I think we need to be diligent and and start that as quickly as possible. That first week is going to be stressful enough. If we, anything we can do to test and and practice ahead of time is going to just make it that much easier. You know, you and Cameron and I talked at length about those opportunities with those groups of nine or less. It is important that we put, we stress that. We're going to need to be flexible, right? You know, it's not, we're not trying to figure out a way to sneak around the recommendation, but we're also trying to be practical and say, you know, our special needs population is going to need more care. You know, I'm looking at Aaron in the audience, and we would be kidding ourselves. We have, we have real deficits of education that we have not evaluated yet, but we're going to need to evaluate and have an overarching plan that regardless of whether we're in remote 2.0 or blended or in-person, we need to recognize that our students need to get caught up and keep moving forward. And that's going to be a challenge regardless of what we're at. So I may not like the recommendation. It's a reasonable recommendation. It is cautious, but it also has enough flexibility, like I said, that, you know, we're going to, we're going to see where we're at today. We're going to, we need to start, and we need to start making decisions. I'm happy that the teachers will be in-person. The technology is going to need a lot of wrangling, and it will be more effective to do that where everybody's together safely, but can rely on our tech, our tech team and, you know, teachers collaborate just the way we all collaborate. So one person who does it better can say, hey, let me help you with with the technology. So I'm looking forward to that collaboration. And then I'm comfortable with the sports recommendation. I think sports, you know, if I look at it, we have an obligation to teach all of our students, and and we have to take that and be reasonable and cautious about it. There's a voluntary nature to sports, and I think our our plan recognizes that. We've done it successfully, as long as we continue to do it, and successful defined as as safely, you know? As long as we can continue to do it safely and successfully, I don't see any reason why we don't foster that. You know, I talked about that on the other hand. On the one hand, we have to be safe. On the other hand, we have to realize our our children, our students, our athletes, our everyone are desperate to have some some semblance of getting back to normal. So the more we can balance that and be judicious about it, I think, is a good path forward. You know, hope, I recognize, and I think we all recognize, all the emails, people were very, were very advocating for one decision or the other. I think this decision is balanced, and we can, we can use it as a step to get to the next step. And I will, I will end my comments by saying, this is not a forever decision. This is a decision for right now. So whether you agree with it or disagree with it, I hope that parents can help work together in a positive way and get to the next decision. And like we said, and I've said a number of times, the goal is to have our students and our teachers and our staff in-person five days a week. That's where we deliver our best education, and we're going to continue to work in that direction. I want to let, I've spoken enough. I want to let everyone else have their opportunity to add any comments or any questions for Dr. Iba's plan.
I said one quick question.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, just to back up to the high school, just sitting here thinking about some of the classes that I know the kids are, have the opportunity to take, that my kids have taken, like hands-on classes, like the woods and the ceramics, is, is there a way to address that? Is there a way a child could change their schedule if, you know, they really want that hands-on? I don't know, maybe if we haven't had an opportunity yet to think about, as you said, get into the weeds that far.
Yeah, they, you know, our goal is to still offer all of the classes that students currently had. So we're not looking to say, you know, we're going to eliminate this class because it's such a hands-on base class. But we have to problem solve, and, you know, metals, woods, not everybody has table saws, you know, at their house. So that is something that, you know, they've been working on. And, you know, not only are they working on, but we have such phenomenal teachers that are in those programs to to problem solve these issues. And so that's something that I can't give you specifics right now, but you take a look at, you know, it's the same thing. You take a look at band, orchestra, choirs. There are classes that there are inherent challenges to offer remotely. And we know, I've had many conversations with Andy Hayer. This is going to be a setback for our music program. You know, you know, you take a look at three months in the spring, however long this goes in the fall, it's a setback for our musicians. You know, how are, you know, things of that nature. So we, the the high school, as we've kind of talked about some building-wide decisions, the expectation that I've set at the district level is that we will offer the courses that we would offer if we were in-person, meaning if we had enough students enroll, we'll offer those. And that they need to problem solve how they can best do that in a remote setting. And we always have that asterisk of if you come to me and say, hey, there is no way, then we'll problem solve with that. But that's, that's the overall goal.
You had the same question?
Very similar question, yes. I will say, you know, thank you for the the time and the recommendation. I think starting in remote makes the most sense and have that flexibility is definitely a place where we need to be and a step in the right direction for that. You know, from the the standpoint of extracurriculars, as you stated, right now, everything is is staying kind of status as it had in the past week. I guess the question I had was in regards to the competition, since a lot of us have not started yet. We are still waiting word from the state and the HSA on those pieces, correct?
So they are allowing competitions in some of the non-contact low-risk sports. So for example, golf started this week. But the the restrictions and the rules that are there for contact sports, they're not able to compete at this, at this point. And, you know, if anybody watched, the Lieutenant Governor had a, spoke, I think it was Tuesday, maybe, about the fact that, you know, people want to debate the Ohio orders that have come out. And there was a July 4th order, and then it was extended. But he stated clearly that they're still trying to figure out contact sports, and that there's no definitive rules or no definitive, the plan is not final at this point of time. But based on the draft rules that are in place right now, the rules make it prohibitive to even move forward with competition for contact sports, even if there was a desire to do so with the testing requirements that are there. So non-contact, low-risk have been able to to start. The others, not the the high-risk contact are not.
Thank you.
Can I just say, I'm sorry, Mr. Miko, just one more thing. One of the other things that I'll be able to provide updates to on the board as we go throughout, is I am not sure if we will have competitors to go against. So if you take a look at our football schedule, even if we wanted to play football, I believe last I was told, there's only six teams that we could still actually play because four of them have already said we're, we're done with sports. So as these next weeks progress, and there's a handful of districts, a significant handful of districts that have taken the same approach as Strongsville of we're going to continue on and and let kids, you know, as Mr. Miko said, if we've got an opportunity to safely let kids do something they love, be together, get better at a sport or or music, we're, we'll allow them to do it. But I think a lot of decisions will be made in these coming weeks. And some of those decisions may be made for us, for us if there's nobody to play against.
And I, I'm just going to piggyback because I have similar comments. You know, if you look at our, if you look at all the work we did determining what the district's facial covering policy was, it was good work, and I felt that we came to a good conclusion. And then the governor came out and said, Strongsville, it's good that you came to the same conclusion I came to. And that'll be the nicest way I put that. So sports, I actually had the conversation with a couple of parents yesterday. As far as I understand it, if we show up, if we're able to, and we show up for the football game, and our competitor doesn't show up, that's called a forfeit and we win. So we'll, we'll take that forfeit and the win if we can. But, you know, Cameron's comment, I think sports is is very fluid. And like I said, if if we can do it and do it safely and allow it, great. But I think the real world is intruding, and I I honestly don't know how it, how it's going to play out. But if you look at college level, if you look at all the different levels, you know, I don't think we can send our football team and all the other football teams to Disneyland and lock them up for a quarter so they can compete. But, you know, my opinion is as much as we can do it, let's, let's, let's keep those opportunities. Any other questions?
I have a question. Is there any chance that we'll receive any further detail from the Board of Health in terms of drilling down in our community, other than like the zip code? Any chance that we'll get any other detail?
Based on the communications we've received so far, no. They have not been, Richard and I have had this conversation quite a bit, because he's done some great work in communication. So Rich, if you want to talk to that point, because I know you-
Sure. I have tried every which way I could, you know, and I'm not interested in necessarily this specific information. I'm interested, and I think we're all interested, in any information that would help guide our decisions. You know, I started with, you know, that map that came out for her, for the county show, showed Strongsville at very low levels. I'm like, well, it would be helpful to know, you know, what the number is on the range. And at a state and county level, they resist giving out that specific information. Even state, the state rep, Dave Greenspan, asked for that information and received the same response. One of the things that influenced my decision to be cautious is in the last week, 44136 went up a level. And so it did, it did give us pause. But I don't, I don't anticipate us getting any better information. I have been spending, I won't say too much time, but a lot of time going through the data that the state releases, and they do release quite a bit of data. All records, and this is just Cuyahoga County, from the beginning of the pandemic to today, for the age group of zero to 19, there are 978 cases of COVID-19. Fortunately, it's a good thing. There have been zero deaths in that age group, but there have been 54 hospitalizations. July to August, and, you know, recognize August, it's, the data is only August 4th. There have been 499 cases and 20 hospitalizations. And so, again, I think that's the lens that the County Board of Health is looking at. And I'm looking at the trends, and I'm hopeful that the trends will continue, and we can have that, that period of remote 2.0, and then safely go to the next steps that we can go to. And the last one I will share with you, just, you know, again, from that abundance of caution, there have been two young people in the state of Ohio who have died, who, you know, and I don't know the details, you know. But at the end of the day, I think it does give every, it should give everyone pause. There, you know, sometimes you hear those attitudes, it doesn't, it doesn't affect the young, et cetera. And by and far, it doesn't. But at the end of the day, we have to make a decision, and until, until we make the next decision, this is the one we're making today. decision, this is the one we're making today. Any other questions for Cameron or comments or?
Mr. Miko, before Cameron moves on to the next one, I just wanted to give a quick update on preschool and can-
Oh, excellent, good timing.
-kindergarten, four-day kindergarten tuition. So, from our last meeting, the, the plan was to have the tuition amounts on this agenda, but given the current recommendation, we decided to push it back for two, two factors, wait to see what the recommendation was, and then also see who continues to stay in four-day kindergarten. And we're going to continue with the same framework as, we'll only charge for the days that we're in-person learning. So, right now, with the first nine weeks being remote, there'll be no charge. And we'll determine a daily rate, which we'll have for you, for the, which we'll have for the board on the next agenda. Once we start back, once we're allowed to go back to in-person, we'll start charging a daily rate for the days that we are in-person. So, so that will be on the next agenda, the daily rate amount. And then, whenever we can, whenever we can get back, whenever we can get back in school, that's when we'll start issuing the tuition amounts.
I do have a question in regards to that. I noticed on the plan that was shown, the half-day and the full-day kindergarten had two different plans for the day, right? There was longer times for the full day, et cetera. But we're not charging anymore, so I'm confused about how that works out. Does that make sense?
It does. So, in, in the, what, what our approach is, is parents are paying for an in-person service. So, e- even though it's true that they will get a full day, they will get different experiences at home, a full day versus a half-day, that parents are paying for that full-day service. And so, the, the spirit of the recommendation would be, when you cannot get that service where your child is in-school in-person, that we would not charge for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Hearing no other conversation, I just, you know, the individual things about the day and how the, how a school day will go is very dense. And I'm sure the sooner we start informing parents, the better, the better off we will all be. And I know that's part of the plan.
It is. And just as we've kind of talked about in the past, these communications will come from building principals. So, the idea that, you know, it's difficult for me to send out global messages that impact thousands of kids. So, you know, once, you know, based on that, the decision that we're moving forward with remote learning tonight, our principals have a lengthy to-do list now, but a focused to-do list in terms of getting ready for the first day of school, remote school. And so, you know, part of that will be communicated. So, parents, we have a lot of parents that have joined our email group in the last few weeks, as, you know, we've, we've been communicating and sending out voice calls to them. Be careful, sometimes it goes into your spam, sometimes there's a, there's a unsubscribe button, and we've noticed that's the most popular reason why people stop getting emails, they accidentally hit unsubscribe. But as always, give me an email, we'll get you hooked up real quickly. Because not only is there going to be information shared as a district level from me, but from the building level as well. So, we want to make sure that everybody's in the loop and in the know. Transitioning to the next item, which is the Remote Learning Plan, as an update to the board, so the Ohio Department of Education, the state, said that if you are going to implement a plan where students are going to get their instruction outside of the school day, beyond the three days that you could use for blizzard bags, you have to have a plan. If you are going to implement a blended learning plan where kids are in-school part of the week and at-home part of the week, you need to have a remote learning plan. And here's the criteria that you need to address and the questions you need to answer. So, you know, I gave a big-picture overview of Remote Learning 2.0, right? This gets into some of the details, and when it's finalized, we'll publicize it and share with everybody. But this has to be submitted to the Ohio Department of Education by Friday, August 21st. It is not required, but highly recommended that Boards of Education approve this. So, we will have it on the August 20th agenda for your consideration. And so, we're going to take the next couple of weeks, all of the directors are taking a look at this and adding as we, as we see fit. So, this is just a draft. I'm not going to go through it in great detail, but just want to kind of give everybody a flavor of what is on here and what we have to talk about. So, the first question that we have to answer is, how will student instructional needs be determined and documented? So, this goes back to how are we going to figure out those educational learning gaps? And what we talk about here, and Aaron has done a tremendous amount of work, and will continue to do that in looking at our curriculum maps and pacing guides, of looking at a gap analysis, gap analysis, saying, what did kids miss last year? How can we integrate that into the, the next part of the grade level or course sequence to, to address these gaps? And then, what are essential learning standards that are going to be the focus, you know, the focus of what we're going to do in instruction for this year? Again, we'll use statewide assessment systems. We talked about Andy's Remote Learning Plan for students with disabilities. We'll specifically state what learning needs are there and how those will be focused upon. And then, you know, if not specifically stated, the same plan will be used for our students that are receiving gifted services, English language services, Title I services as well. So, those are ways that we're going to determine the instructional needs of our students. The next question is, what methods are going to be used to determine competency, grant credit, promote to a higher grade level? So, these six bullet points, I can summarize in a statement that says, however we did it in, when you were in-person, is going to be the same way we're going to do it when you're remote. So, if you're at the high school level, you have to get a D or better, or you're a middle school student, take, you know, taking credited classes, you know, you, you have to get a D or better to get that credit. You know, we will assign and grade students' work, and the, the report card procedure and the grading system will remain the same. So, you know, at the elementary level, for certain grade levels, you'll be assessed against the standards. Third grade, we start grades, right, Aaron? So, third grade, we add grades into that mix all the way on up to high school. So, last spring, we had a different criteria for how students would be assessed. We froze grades, we said they weren't going to go any lower than they were at the end of the third quarter, and we said you had to engage with us, and if you didn't, then we would give you an incomplete. This year, and I think this goes to the next question, maybe, nope, that's not it yet, maybe it's in this question here. But so, it goes to the idea of how are we going to grade students? We're grading them as we would in any other in-person situation. So, through Google Classroom, students will be, have the ability to have work assigned, they will submit work, they will get graded feedback, not only through Google Classroom, but other platforms as well. So, I think it's important for parents to note that traditional grading practices will be implemented. All right, attendance is the next one. If you want to talk about confusing, mind-boggling rules that we have to look at for attend, for this whole Remote Learning Plan, it's attendance. So, what the state has said is, they're not making any accommodations or leniency on the attendance rules. The minimum attendance hours still apply. We're fine based on the number of school days we have, as we've talked about. The issue is, is they are stating that you need to take attendance of students in an online format. So, what we've kind of broken it down, there's, again, this is the most, in all seriousness, it's the most confusing, and it's the most difficult to implement in a practical way. And so, we've, we've taken a bunch of different resources and legal advice, and what we're saying is, if you are in live sync, if the teacher's offering live synchronous learning, so those, those schedules we looked at, the teacher's going to take attendance, just like he or she would if you were in class. I'm supposed to have 25 kids online, I have 24, I'm going to submit, the one student is absent from my class. At the elementary level, we'll do some things, you know, it's not by class, but we'll do something similar there. Now, the challenge is, they say, when you're in asynchronous learning, you have to, the teacher has to say, here's how long the project should take, and if you complete the project, you will get credit for attending my class for that number of hours. That's great in theory, but I don't understand how that translates into practice. So, what we put in our plan is that a teacher will create the live sessions, and any asynchronous work will be equivalent of five days of school. If the student turns in that work and is on the livestream, they will be marked as present. If they don't turn in the work, not only will they not get the grade, they will be marked absent for the equivalent amount of time. We'll track absences, we have to report absences in the letters, as we always have. The one caveat, and it's in the law that we have to say, is if we can document that there's a reason a student, as we talked about earlier, cannot log on at the scheduled time, then we, as long as there's progress and completion of work, that may be acceptable. But we would need to document that. So, more to come on attendance. The next one is, how will we progress monitor students in remote learning? We continue to use our formative instructional practices. That's a fancy word for saying, before we get to the end and we test you and it really counts to show mastery of learning, we're going to, we're going to check, have these periodic checks throughout, and adjust our plan and adjust in our instruction to make sure you're, you're making progress. We have vendor assessments that we use that are listed there. We have common assessments, common means. Everybody in first grade has the same assessments that we can use, so we can see how students are progressing. And this is where I talked about that grading would be reported at the same duration, the same pace, as has been done in the past. And student, for our students with disabilities, not only do they get a report card, they get a progress monitoring or progress update, that will still happen as it would in a traditional in-school setting. The next one is, how are we going to ensure equitable access? So, equitable access simply means that people, because, you know, students, whether it's access to resources, access to technologies, that they would not be at a disadvantage because of something that's outside of their control. So, as a school district, we want to make sure everybody has equal access to what we're doing. We're solving that problem by saying, all K-12 students will be issued, given a school-issued Chromebook. We've, we've purchased software and applications that's going to help for access, once you have that Chromebook. Mr. Binkley completed a stu, a parent survey determining, you know, who, not only what devices do you have at home, but what is your Wi-Fi capability, and what is the bandwidth of that? Meaning, you know, I know at my house, when the kids were streaming something, my wife was on a call, I was on a call, it got a little iffy. And so, some of, some of us may not have the strength of Wi-Fi to support or internet at home to support that. And then, we need to offer alternate means for kids to complete work, to submit work, that may have that weak internet, may not have the ability to print instructional materials if needed. And so, those are some of the things we're going to do to make sure we have equitable access. And then, finally, professional development, we talked a lot about that. All of our teachers, elementary teachers are going through Google Classroom training this week. We have teachers' leading training at the high school in terms of blended learning practices that are applicable, don't think of it just as blended learning, whether it's in-person, blended, or remote, they work. And so, we'll have ongoing professional development throughout the school year and very heavily provided in the, in the starting weeks of the, months of the school year. So, again, kind of a, an overview, the final plan will be up for your consideration in a few weeks. But anything in the terms of the details of our Remote Learning Plan that either we need to put on the list to answer or that we can answer tonight?
I'm comfortable, Cameron. I don't, I think you have consensus, everyone's comfortable. Nice work.
Thank you. Moving on, we have a couple items for a vote. We've talked about that we're recommending that our school calendar remain the same, except the week of August 17th would be a non-student, it would be staff report for professional development and training, and it would move the first day of school for all students to be August 24th. So, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the revised school calendar for the upcoming school year be adopted as presented in Exhibit A. I apologize, that one doesn't have a vote, that'll be through the consent calendar. We do have the one item for a vote, and that's a donation agreement. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the donation agreement between Strongsville City School District and Raising Canes be approved as listed in the exhibit. So, I want to thank Denny Ziegler, our athletic director, Dan Martin, our booster president, for their work on this partnership. It's a, it's a $30,000 commitment by Raising Canes, supporting various athletic programs and work of the district. And so, that's a tremendous partnership we have with Raising Canes and a tremendous financial commitment. I, I do want to make note of a, of a, you know, a conversation that I had with the Raising Canes leadership, that they have our commitment, that if we're not able to fulfill aspects of the contract because of the pandemic, that we would bring to the board an addendum. We're, we're not going to hold them to these, the stipulations in the contract for advertising that they would get at various venues if those venues are not available to them. So, just prior to voting, I want to make sure that you were aware of that.
Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum, any discussion? I will say, we, at least in my family, we've done extensive research on Raising Canes to make sure they're a good corporate partner. And they are, but we do want to, you know, I want to make sure to thank all of the athletic boosters, along with Raising Canes. If anybody's driven on Pearl, you know, I think they, you can easily recognize the popularity of Raising Canes. So, we look forward to having that partnership, and we thank them for it. And I have no other comments. Anyone else? Mr. Onnagnostu.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
And Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries.
Moving on to some of our department updates for this month, under Student Services, under B1, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Strongsville Board of Education enters into a tuition excess cost agreement with educational alternatives, replacements of students with disabilities for the upcoming school year as found in Exhibit C. Under B2, that, be it resolved upon the recommendation that the board enters into a student transportation agreement with educational alternatives. The agreement engages at alt to provide transportation services for the district's students enrolled in their school locations for the upcoming school year as found in Exhibit D. Under B3, be it resolved upon the recommendation that the Board of Education enters into a contract with Kids Link School, replacement of a student with disabilities for the upcoming school year at a cost of $81,000 per the attached Exhibit E. Under B4, that the Board enters into agreement with Kids Link, replacement of a student with disability for the upcoming school year for $81,000 per the attached Exhibit F. Under B5, it's the same recommendation, a, a separate student, so that's why it's in Exhibit G. Under B6, this is a recommendation that the Board enters into agreement with the Cleveland Clinic Children's Hospital for Rehabilitation, on behalf of its Learner School for Autism for students with disabilities for the upcoming school year as found in Exhibit H. Any questions on Student Services? Moving on, Human Resources, under C1, there's resignation of a certificated supplemental and resignations of non-certificated supplemental contracts. Under C2, there's appointments of non-certificated supplemental contracts. Under C3, we've had some changes in our guidance department or our school counselor assignments, and those are reflected as changes in status for supplemental contracts. So, as I shared with the board, Mrs. Lousky, who's worked at the high school, is now going to the elementary school. There's no extended days for our counselors there, so that's that change there. Kristen Gerber, who's done a phenomenal job at the elementary, is moving to the middle school. And Heather Koblenz, who's been at the middle school, was at the high school, then went back to the middle school, is now going back to the high school. So, we're excited, you know, as a school counselor, sometimes it's nice to have a change in variety, and they're looking to expand their skills. And so, this is, this addresses the additional time or extended time that they have associated with those roles. Under C4, changes in status for non-certificated staff. Under C5, these are salary upgrades for staff that we hired now that their official transcripts and years of service have been submitted to the district. We changed them from BA0, how you originally hired them, to what their degree and experience equates to on our salary schedule. Under C6, we have a disability leave for a non-certificated staff member. C7, a medical leave for an administrative staff member. And under C8, we have an unpaid leave for parental leave for a certificated staff member. Under Technology, we do have one item that's for a vote, and this is for technology upgrades. Just to give context, the board, a few months ago, provide our approved recommendation for a certain amount of money to purchase Chromebooks. As we all probably have experienced, the supply chain and logistics with this pandemic have been disrupted. We've ordered, a while ago, we ordered the Chromebooks that we would need. One of the chips that's in the Chromebook, the producer of that chip is no longer allowed to produce that chip, which has stalled our supply chain, which has led to the possibility that Chromebooks will not be here in time for the start of the school year. So, this recommendation is that we would allow Dave Binkley, our technology director in his department, to go and source those Chromebooks locally, so we're not worried about them coming from overseas, but Chromebooks that are in stock at local vendors. So, be it resolved upon my recommendation that the Board approves the purchase of Chromebooks and Google Chrome Management licenses, and the amount not- and Google Chrome Management licenses, in the amount not to exceed $125,000 through vendors with available stock. All Board of Education purchasing policies will be adhered to.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? So I will share that technology everywhere is, you know, depending on the technology is difficult to source or find. You know, as an example, webcams are either ridiculously inflated in price compared to the price pre-pandemic, or simply out of stock and impossible to find. So I want to commend Dave for being proactive and assure the public that, you know, regardless of what the, you know, we will get the Chromebooks in, and if we don't, we can be practical. I know my, my family, we must have three of them, per child probably, at the rate we're going. So we can work with families that already have one where appropriate. Any other discussion?
George?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries.
At this time, Mr. Miko, I'd like to go to the addendum that you have on the green sheet, which is under Business Services. There's two items we're asking for the board's consideration. These are specific needs to address social distancing. So if you take a look at some of our primary classrooms and our science labs or other classrooms, they have tables. We cannot appropriately, when we, when we return to in-person schooling, we cannot appropriately socially distance. We have enough desks at the high school to remove tables and use desks at the high school, so we don't have any purchase there. But at the elementary and at the middle school level, we do not have that stock furniture or availability. So, under E1, be it resolved upon my recommendation that the board approves the purchase of 460 student desks for all district elementary buildings from Schiffler Equipment at the cost of $72,700, funding to be from the general fund new equipment as found in Exhibit K.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? George?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries.
The second one is for middle school desks. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the board approves the purchase of 350 student desks for the middle school from school specialty, at a total cost of $53,235, funding to be from the general fund new equipment as found in Exhibit L.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I will share with the public, if anybody wonders what our intentions are, we're not buying over $100,000 worth of furniture to stay remote 2.0. We're buying over $100,000 of furniture to have our students in person.
Any other comments? Mr. Onagastu.
I've just, before I take the vote, just one more comment. So with both of these, that, as you touched on, they're currently coming out of the general fund, but there may be additional, we got, received the CARES Act, which we have allocated, but there might be other funds coming down the line, such as the state notified us, but hasn't opened the application, called coronavirus relief funds. So if we get those, we'll look to swap some of the charges as well. Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries.
And that concludes my report.
Next on our agenda is the consent calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the consent calendar at this point of the agenda means all items in the agenda with asterisks are adopted by a single motion, unless a member or superintendent requests otherwise. Do I have any requests? We don't have any corrections or modifications to the agenda that I remember. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Onagastu.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Next on our agenda is first reading for a number of policies. We did review them at our previous policy committee meeting. The entire board has been provided with the current copies. This is our first reading for those policies. Our practice is to have three readings, so this is the first reading. But we will then go to Section B, which is first reading, and we are waiving the second and third readings. And that's for our new policy, 8450 dot 01, protective facial coverings during pandemic epidemic events. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion?
So, the policy follows our discussion from the previous week, our previous meeting, rather. It's a comprehensive, broad, and flexible policy. And the policy puts forth that we will have masks, and then we rely on our administrative guidelines that Dr. Raiba will develop in conjunction with the team to make sure that they're appropriate at the elementary level, at the middle school level, or at the high school level. And I'm sure we can all thank Governor DeWine for deciding that we're going to do it anyways. Any other discussion?
Mr. Onagastu.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Next on our agenda is Board Liaison and Committee Appointment Reassignments for the remainder of this calendar year. And I apologize to the board and the public for just mucking it up last time. So we're going to correct it. In addition, so Laura is going to be one of the members of the Business Advisory Council along with Seth, and Sheri is going to join me on legislation. And one of our ideas was that it would be helpful for all of us to learn to have more opportunity to be on different committees. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? George, would you take the role?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Next on our agenda are some training items and expenses therefrom. So number one is new board member training. Mrs. Bissell and Mrs. Hausel went to our Ohio School Board's Board Member 101 Survival Kit for your first 90 days. I'm fairly certain, and this was back in January, so I'm fairly certain they didn't spend a whole lot of time on pandemic awareness. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? George?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes. And then the next one was a mental health and social emotional learning summit, and Michelle and Laura also went to that one. That was on February 25th. There was no cost to attend this summit. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, so moved.
Second?
Second.
I have a question.
I haven't asked for discussion yet.
I know it comes next.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Can you speak to why these are on the agenda? Do we have to approve them for a particular reason?
Yes. George?
So, so the reason why they're late, so per board policy, that in order for these expenses to be expensed and also for you to be compensated for your time at these expenses, they must be approved by the board. It's somewhat new in the, my past, my six years here in the district, we haven't had, we haven't experienced this yet, so we're a little late on. It came to reimburse you guys for the, for the time.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
So at this point, I just want to compliment both Mrs. Bissell and Mrs. Hausum. You took your roles seriously and you realized that there was training offered and you availed yourself of it. And so, I think that's appreciated by all of us. You know, again, a prepared board member is a better board member, so thank you.
Mr. Onagastu.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. And then we have some training expenses to approve for the training we just discussed. So the first, the first expense is for reimbursables for the new board member training on January 11th. Be it resolved that the Strongsville City School Board of Education approve Michelle Bissell and Laurel Wolf Hausel's reimbursable expenses as outlined in the exhibit. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any, motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? George?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Mr. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. And then we have the expenses for the February 25th training session for both Michelle and Laura. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? Mr. Onagastu.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. And once again, thank you to both of you for taking part in your education. I will share real quickly that one of the questions we get asked when we're, when anybody asks about what it's like to be a board member, you get asked, how many hours do you spend in your duties? And whatever I told any of you, I lied. Before we get to executive session, I do want to highlight, Dan, do you, do you have the press release for the sales tax holiday?
There's not a press release, but I'm going to send out something out tomorrow on social media.
It's this weekend, correct?
Correct.
So, starting at midnight Friday through midnight Sunday, there's a sales tax holiday that has been traditional in Ohio for a number of years now. It is kind of ironic, because I, you know, I think we're all wondering, what kind of school supplies are we going to need? But for what it's worth, you will save 8% sales tax, so that's not immaterial. Any other others?
Mr. Miko, since we're on the topic of school board training, typically this meeting,[1685.83]